Good evening and welcome to the July 16th, 2025 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. First up on our agenda this evening is the approval of minutes from July 2nd, 2025. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of July 2nd, 2025. Is written in the record?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are adopted 4-0. Next up on our agenda tonight is AFP 10126-2025, parking waiver at 108 Meme Avenue. I'm presenting from staff this evening is Jasmine.
Good evening. Staff before you present amendment to final site plan application AFP-10126-2025. As shown on the screen, the property is located at 108 Meme Avenue. The applicant recently received special exception approval from the Board of Appeals on July 9th for the housing for the elderly for up to eight residents. So as a condition of the special exception approval, the applicant must obtain a parking waiver from the Plan Commission for the proposed parking plan prior to the issuance of a use noxity permit. This application comes before the Plan Commission in accordance with section 24-7.6 of the zoning ordinance, which authorizes the Plan Commission to grant waivers from the parking ordinance. And I will have the applicant, Mr. Ali, do the presentation this evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
This is Shaparat Alib, owner of Meme Avenue. We are here for requesting a special exception parking waiver. I think it's required for parking for four bedrooms, two residents each, since the layout and the reasonably provided development due to unique conditions, we cannot assess the presence of the existing building and unique natural features and topography and the constraint that may hinder the ability to provide the minimum number of parking spaces. We have the pictures and the drawing requesting additional parking requirement waiver. And in addition to the, because I have, I'm eligible to get two parking permits per household that is allowed also. So we have a space, but it's not enough as per the guidelines. That's the reason we are requesting the waiver.
So, good evening Commissioners. This is his cousin, Hursheed Bilgrami. I'm also a resident of Gaithersburg. I am the one who put the engineering design together and the reasoning behind this is the, he's having elderly care facility here, assisted living, and then the occupancy is aid. For that, the requirement was four parking spaces, out of which one should be handicap. So based on the parking pad size which you see on the photos on the screen, I took the city of Gaithersburg parking lot guidelines and I kind of like put together the design. So one of the parking has handicap which has a hatch space for additional space besides the parking aisle when the handicap person gets off from the car and all that. So in order to accommodate that, only three could be accommodated. And then the spacing between the aisles is also like fell short of those standards. So there are, the special exception is for two. First, the requirement of four parking spaces. So we have three. We could accommodate in terms of striping to the existing pad you see. And then the second exception is the spacing between the aisles for when the cars exit, when they back out and then exit the driveway. The requirement, I think we fell short by six feet according to the requirements, but I recently went and field measured it. It's actually three and a half short than the 26 feet requirement. But this, on the parking pad, it's three. The requirement is four. What my cousin had explained that every household on this street is entitled for permit parking and of course he's going to apply for that and then he gets like two permits for that. Now, in terms of parking demand on the street, I have visited the side several times during the day as well as in the evening. It's never full. So in front of his property, when we visited together, it's both our cars, nobody was parked there ever. But right opposite side, all I saw was like one car always there are Mercedes Benz. So what I, the intention is like parking demand is really low on this street and there's a permit parking. So it's, so you have to consider that as well. That's all we are saying for the special exception.
All right.
Thank you.
Can you remind us, I'm going back in my memory to the prior, prior application that we reviewed a meeting or two ago. For the residents who are going to be living here, is, is ownership of a vehicle or having a vehicle on site not allowed per the terms? In other words, these spaces are primarily used for staff and visitors, correct?
It's for caretakers and also the visitors. My cousin also runs another type of facility in Germantown and all the clients, the persons who are staying there, the seniors, nobody drives. As a matter of fact, I shouldn't say this in this room, but one has, one has amputee legs and things like that and they need walkers and on wheelchairs. They need assistance even to go out of the house. Sometimes you take them out in the backyard and things like that. So nobody's driving. But if there's a condition that we make sure that they don't bring their cars, we can do that as well.
I was, I was thinking about that because I noticed it said will not, but I was just thinking that might, we might condition that, that I would feel more comfortable if we did condition it, to be honest with you.
That's fine.
Sure. Yeah, we can do that.
That's fine.
Any other questions?
I'm happy to hear that you said it's actually 23 and a half feet?
Yes.
And not 20 feet because that's a little tight.
Yeah, it's slightly more than that.
I mean, I know it's not 26, but 23 is better than 20.
There's not, there's not much difference, but if people, if there are like compact cars parked, they can easily maneuver.
Yeah, turn around and yeah.
How are you designating the handicap spot? Is that with a sign, signage, or paint?
The, I have submitted in my drawing package before. It's not shown on the screen. But the parking space on the top right side of the parking pad that you see on the screen, I have a parking aisle and then at the edge will be the hatch space. So from there, we have to connect the, we have to find like a, will be a painted crosswalk guiding them through to the, the back of the house, which is a patio. And then the patio also provides an access. There will be a ramp.
ADA, right.
ADA ramp which leads them into the door, into the, in the facility.
Okay. So that the, the space itself designated, handicap is designated.
We actually in the sketch that I submitted, I am showing a pavement marking symbol for the handicap as well as a handicap sign in front of the parking aisle.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Before we go to discussion, is there anyone either here in person or listening in online who would like to speak or provide comments on this application? If you're online, just raise your hand and you'll be unmuted to, to speak.
I don't see anyone.
Don't see anyone online and no one here in the audience to speak as well either. Commissioners, any, any discussion, any thoughts? Danny, did you want to feel strongly adding a?
I would, I would like to see a condition. I mean, I'm not trying to be, I think we could just condition it.
Okay. So it's a, it's an additional condition, what that, that, you know?
Occupants.
Residents.
Residents.
You know, the applicant will prohibit residents from, from parking their cars.
Only for, locating on site. Yeah, yeah.
Jasmine, does that?
Does that kind of make sense? Chairman?
Yep, that makes sense. I'm just double checking because I know in the resolution when the special exception was granted, I believe that was in, in the resolution that noted that residents won't own vehicles.
Okay. We can add it as a, as a condition to be sure, but it sounds like it's well covered.
Yeah, okay.
All right. And staff recommendation?
So staff recommends that the Plan Commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation, grant amendment to final site plan application AFP-10126-2025 for a parking waiver, finding it in compliance with section 24-7.6 of the city zoning ordinance with the one condition written in the record.
Is there a motion, please?
I just want to make a comment. I mean, I absolutely appreciate the use and you doing this because senior housing and accessible housing, elderly housing is much needed in our area. So this is a good thing.
Thank you. Sure.
Motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendations, grant amendment to final site plan AFP-10126-2025 FOA, a parking waiver, finding it in compliance with section 24-7.6 of the city's zoning ordinance.
If I could actually interrupt real quick, it does look like one person did raise their hand.
Oh, okay.
If you wanted to see if they would like to provide some testimony before you.
Yeah, absolutely. Christine, if you could, you're unmuted. If you could unmute yourself and, and provide any commentary or questions? Can you hear us?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Okay. So, I'm the neighbor. I live at 106 Meme Avenue. And my question is, when there is, when he has visitors, when he has staff and they are parked on the street, are they going to be parked in front of my residence?
Okay, you're?
And if they are parked in, in front of my residence, how long will they be parked in front of my residence?
All right. Now, Greg.
This street is covered under the city's new parking permit program. So visitors are allowed, I think, two hours parking without having to get requests, receive a special visitor permit from the city. But a property owner does have the right and the ability to request those parking permits as well through the city if there's extended stays beyond the two hours.
But there's no restriction, someone who's either has a visitor permit or a resident permit, there's no restriction where within the zone.
There's no restriction that I'm aware of, where they can park on the street as long as you have the permit or if you're within the two hour limit.
So it's, it's entirely permissible for them to park in front of a, another property for the duration of their permitted visit. So there's no, there's no way for us to govern that restricted or frankly enforce it.
Right.
All right. We have a, we have a motion on, on the floor. Has it second?
Not yet.
Has it, is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next up on our agenda this evening is amendment to final site plan or amendment to final plan for outdoor shed storage at 895 Quince Orchard Road. And are you presenting from staff this evening?
Yes, I am.
Wonderful.
Good evening. Staff is before you to present amendment to final site plan application AFP-10076-2025. As shown on the screen, the subject property is located at 895 Quince Orchard Road. The applicant is requesting a waiver from the 25-foot minimum setback and screening requirements for the display of sheds on the property. The application, this application comes before the Plan Commission in accordance with section 24-6.5, which grants the Plan Commission to reduce the setback distance requirement and allow outdoor storage without screening. Here today with us, we have Aaron Wade from High Point Buildings and you are able to speak.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. If you all are okay with it, I'm, I think the quickest and easiest way to explain why I'm here is to just read what I have already put together. I apologize.
Sure.
Guys have probably already skimmed this thing, but it's pretty concise and straight to the point. So I own High Point Buildings, we're a retailer of Amish-built sheds and we have just recently opened up for business here in Montgomery County, City of Gaithersburg. Excited to be here. And so to read through this, we recently opened up a location at 895 Quince Orchard Road. We've been working with folks at the City of Gaithersburg to obtain all necessary permits and approvals to operate our business here. Prior to signing a lease, I had made a phone call or two to the city just to confirm that the zoning and some other things weren't in compliance with what we were trying to do there and received confirmation from the city that the intended use was allowed on the property based on its zoning, which I believe is C2. And then after signing the lease and making application for an occupancy permit, I was informed that our product, which is sheds, was considered outdoor storage and that I would be subject to certain limitations because of the designation of it being outdoor storage. Two of these requirements that I found out at this point were alarming to me because they would do significant harm to our business and to be honest, would have perhaps changed my decision to even lease the property at all had I, had I been familiar with these beforehand. So as was just stated, I'm seeking a waiver of two of these requirements. One is a 25-foot minimum setback and two is the screening requirement, which says that all outdoor storage areas must be fully enclosed by a fence or other form of secured screening from all adjacent properties. One thing I would add is that this property already is, there are fences on three of the four property lines already. So really we're just talking about the portion of the property that, that is adjacent to Quince Orchard Road that I'm seeking a waiver for. While I cannot find information on the reasoning behind these two regulations, I am assuming that they are much more relevant to outdoor storage or true outdoor storage products such as lumber, building materials, vinyl siding, metal roofing, landscaping materials, et cetera, where there may be aesthetic reasons to shield these items from public view, or perhaps there are safety reasons to keep these products further from property lines and secure behind walls and fences. In our case, the whole point is to have our products visible and easily accessible to customers. That is why we sought out a high-traffic location along a main thoroughfare, creating barriers around our sheds and keeping them far from property lines is unnecessary in my opinion and would do serious harm to our ability to market and sell them. Similar to an automobile dealership, our sheds are not an eyesore nor do they present a danger to customers that want to view them. We do not sell raw materials or lumber. Our retail space is not a material storage yard. The only products that we have on display are fully constructed sheds. We envision having up to 30 sheds on display at any given time, some of which will be located on the Montgomery County side of the property as, is contained in this, in this packet. A portion of the property is in the City of Gaithersburg and other portion of the property is in Montgomery County. So a significant amount of our shed inventory will be not even in the City of Gaithersburg side of the property. As far as sheds located along Quince Orchard Road, we envision no more than five sheds placed along the road at any given time and the sheds located along the front of the property will not, will not sit on the gravel area. In closing, we're, we are spending a significant amount of money to rent a property that is along a busy road and zone correctly. To have us recess these sheds further off the property line and install screening around them would negate many of the reasons we are paying so much in rent to lease this property to begin with. So that's, I think, a good summary of what, why I'm here and any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you very much. I think your, your reasoning for being here makes, makes a whole lot of sense.
I mean, I actually happen to live that, not that far and I drove by and said, ooh, cool. Anyway, it doesn't look, it doesn't look like you because I need one.
Sorry.
Sorry. But I mean, you're not going to have like raw materials laying around. I mean, that's, I think that was to make sure.
I, I think this is, this is one of, there's no possible way to write a zoning ordinance that, that is perfect and captures every scenario.
Nuance, right.
And I think you've, you've presented the one probably perfect, perfect application that, that doesn't, doesn't align with the intent of the zoning ordinance where your product is the storage.
Right.
So I, you know.
I mean, you're models, right? You examples.
If you were selling Greek statues, this wouldn't be a problem. But this is a great one.
Mr. Chairman, I have some serious concerns. One I'd like to ask staff, where else in the entire city do we allow product placement this close to the road?
Currently, I'm not aware of any existing businesses that have something, some sort of unique case.
We do see outdoor storage sometimes associated with like the Home Depot or other type of large big box stores. And when we wrote the zoning code update recently.
There's a couple of landscaping firms.
But they're setback.
We acknowledge that sometimes there are locations where outdoor storage may be appropriate and sometimes there may not be. So we did try to again thread the needle in a way, right, to did allow the Plan Commission some flexibility to obviously waive those requirements on a case-by-case basis if, if it was needed based off a business model or, or what they were selling.
I drove by this afternoon and I noticed that there were three sheds out there that were pretty much adjacent to Quince Orchard. And you have very large, it looks like a hand-painted sign or an Amish, says Amish Sheds. It's a very large sign. I don't know if that has been yet adjudicated as far as within a compliance of our signage, but that sign is being blocked at least by two of the sheds as you come up Quince Orchard Road. So I kind of, I understand your, your situation with respect to marketing, but right now the way it's situated, you're not doing yourself any favor by having the sheds blocking the sign, if the sign is in compliance to begin with. Secondly, I think the, the rotation of sheds, you've got now three, you said the maximum of five sheds on Quince Orchard is going to be?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I, depending on the size of the sheds, because the sheds are going to be rotated, I think that also presents a problem because you may have sheds that are 10 by 10 or you may have sheds that are even larger than that, as I've noticed, coming in. So I'd like some more clarification regarding the sizing and the kinds of sheds that are going to be out there. Number, number three, I see a problem with the, I guess, I have a security concern. The sheds are totally enclosed. Do they have locks? Are there doors on these sheds?
Yes.
And what happens at night when it's not being washed?
All the sheds get locked at night?
They are shut, they are locked. They have actual locks.
They have keys and locks.
Keys and locks. Okay. That answers that question. So I'd like to flush out those concerns a little bit more with staff if possible and the applicant?
Sure. So you want to ask about the question about the sizes of the shed stored along?
The sizing of sheds, but the signage, number one.
Signage. So any signage would need to be in performance with our city ordinance. The applicant did submit a signed permit. I think currently right now you have a temporary sign, but you're looking to put a more of a permanent.
We applied for a signed permit. That permit was granted to us. We've already had one inspection on the sign and we are, once we get the landscaping installed, we'll have.
And that is the sign that's currently out there right now?
I'm sorry?
Is that the sign that's currently out?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
So what you see out there is what was, what was put on the sign, application and approved?
Okay. My other concern is the exhibit, exhibit number two that was in the applicant's package. To me, I don't think that really tells me much other than just handwritten diagram that doesn't really show me any more detail than just the fact you've got X amount of sheds going on a piece of land. Can you elaborate on that a little bit more? I mean, is there another way of illustrating? Because I see a continuation of where these other 10, 15 sheds are going to be in the back or behind the ones that are on Quince Orchard Road, but all I see is a space. I don't see any detail of that. See what I'm saying?
Talking about the?
The upper right, no, the upper side, that, that side, yeah.
So you're looking to understand spacing, orientation and layout?
Exactly.
Well, it's a very large property. I don't know the exact acreage of it, but I would say it's probably close to an acre and a half to two acres. I would tell you a significant portion of the property is sloped and does not, is not conducive to staging sheds, displaying sheds. So in fact, there's a significant portion of the property that's along Quince Orchard Road that has a steep decline and is not suitable to display sheds. And also it encroaches in some of the proposed, some of the parking areas as well. So there's a very limited amount of space along Quince Orchard Road, which will permit, which is, works for us to display sheds. So that's why I've only said that there's only going to be a max five sheds displayed along Quince Orchard Road. Like you just said a few minutes ago, I think there's three right now. And so by and large, majority of the frontage along Quince Orchard Road won't have sheds displayed for the reasons I just articulated. In terms of where else are we going to put sheds, we'll have roughly, we generally will have roughly 20 to 25 sheds on site at any given time. We said 30 because it could come to that, it could be 30 at some point. And I just wanted to have the sort of the worst case, not worst case, but the highest case scenario in here. But right now, if you were to walk the property, I think there's 18 to 20 sheds on there right now.
Okay.
It makes sense to put the sheds in a flat area. So majority of the sheds are behind the parking area. You can see where we've got it hash marked. That's where we would like to display the majority of the shed, or we plan to display the majority of the sheds back there. It's flat and it's, and we have all the sheds in one, one specific area so people can look through them, don't have to walk the entire property. The rest of the property is a lot of grass, it's muddy, you know, sloped. It's not conducive to placing sheds. So there's frankly going to be quite a bit of open space here. Not to say we won't put sheds in those areas, but, but anywhere you, like even some of the areas that are hash marked here or cross marked here, there's no sheds there right now. So we're trying to just, or I'm trying to show here what could be, but the reality is that, you know, probably, there probably won't be sheds in all these areas all the time.
Are the sheds prefabbed? Or they brought in, they brought, they trucked in prefabbed?
Correct, yes.
So there's no construction going on, on the site, other than just siding?
No, they're all built up in Langston, Pennsylvania.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? For the, for the benefit of the public, there's no one else here in person to speak. I do see one individual online. If you're, have questions or testimony, please raise your hand and we'll unmute you and give you a chance to, to share your testimony. All right. Not, not seeing anything there. Discussion amongst, amongst the commission on this application?
This is one that Jasmine, you need to package and give it a paragraph and send it off to the local planning schools. It's another great example of, of, you know, that sort of misuse of words. There's no way around it, like, you know, like the chair, vice chair said, but there's, it's just really hysterical. It's really, really funny and weird. So.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have any objection. I mean, I think the, you know, the need for things to be orderly and well-managed obviously serves your business well, seeing as how this is a showroom, but a show area. But, you know, a show area, you know, but I'm, I'm sure I trust, you know, the city from an inspection and compliance standpoint, you know, will make sure this isn't a public nuisance, but there are plenty of examples of these types of facilities around. of these types of facilities around, not necessarily in Gaithersburg, but around the area. And I, I don't have any, any issue with it from a.
Yeah, if you were selling used cars or sculptures, you wouldn't have been before us. This would be allowed in C2, exactly as it is. And would be a lot more asphalt. So, I'm, I'm happy that there's not more asphalt, that there's sheds with grass instead.
There was a major tree removed.
Yeah, I saw. Yeah. Yeah. Permit it, wasn't exciting.
No, where you're going to be storing the, the additional sheds, is there like some, like a fence or some shielding or something? I know as well, it's behind the parking, but there's not going to be a fence or anything there?
No, we don't intend on putting any more fencing up.
Okay.
There's existing fence between you and this, pretty, pretty muscular fence.
Yeah.
And.
The nuclear facility.
Yeah, right. So, I don't think there's any.
Yeah, I don't think of you being more than that, right?
Danny and I aren't jumping over that fence anytime soon.
Nope.
All right.
Okay.
Staff recommendation, please?
Sure. Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the testimony in the record, and the staff report, findings and recommendation, grant amendment to final site plan AFP-10076-2025, final site plan approval, and finding it in performance with section 24-6.5 of the city zoning ordinance.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion, please?
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report, findings and recommendations on our discussion tonight, grant amendment to final site plan for AFP-10076-2025 for a waiver from the outdoor storage ordinance, finding it in compliance with section 24-6.5 of the city's zoning ordinance.
Thank you very much. It's been moved. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Passes three zero one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us on our agenda this evening to, from the commission. Lloyd?
Nothing further.
Oh, nothing tonight.
All right. Staff, Jasmine?
Just one note. We only have one meeting in August. That's going to be, yep, only one meeting in August. So, that is on August 6. I've already pulled some of the commissioners on that, their availability.
There's nothing, no joint meeting coming up?
Nope.
That was rescale, okay.
Yep, that was more of just a, just pulling the commission to see the reveal on both dates. But, so there's no meeting in July.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right. Anything from you?
Nope.
Greg? No? Frank?
Nothing tonight.
No, sir.
All right. In that case, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.